Okay, we'll go ahead and bring the city council in order.
I'd like to ask you to please stand and join in reciting the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Kevin, could you please do roll call?
Jenny Bowers Schultz.
Here.
Matt Dyer.
Here.
Tyler Foyle Kent.
Here.
Scott Murray.
Here.
Abby Wilder.
Here.
Okay. Does everyone give it a chance to review the minutes from the previous meeting on April 2nd?
Make the motion accepted as emailed.
What's that? Motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Same sign. Okay. We just have a guest with us tonight. Do you want to introduce yourself? She's pretty loud, her phone.
Yeah. I'm Erica T. Junior at Ballack County, South Lake City.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thanks for being here. Okay, I saw that drawing she's had on there. Saw that. Okay, first we have an ordinance, um, 2024-5.
This is just adopting the supplement to our code book from all the ordinances from 2023.
So these are changes made to the code book and we're just adopting all those changes at one time?
Yep, one time.
Okay.
I will move to introduce ordinance 2024-5 on its first reading by short title only.
Motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign.
Ordinance number 2024-5, an ordinance of the common council of the city of Decatur, Indiana, which enacts and adopts S8 supplement to the code of ordinances of the city of Decatur, Indiana, in which declares an emergency regarding the effective date of such supplement. I move to pass ordinance 2024-5 on its first reading. Second.
Motion of second, roll call vote?
Jane Bowers Schultz.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Foyle Kent.
Yes.
Scott Murray.
Yes.
Abby Wilder.
Yes.
So, I need to go second. One, you're gonna be the second one. Yeah, okay. First, yeah, go that route first. Yes, yeah. I move to place ordinance 2024-5 on its second reading by short title only.
Second.
Motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign.
Ordinance, oh yeah, sorry guys. Ordinance number 2024-5, an ordinance of the common council of the city of Decatur, Indiana, which enacts and adopts S8 supplement to the code of ordinances of the city of Decatur, Indiana, in which declares an emergency regarding the effective date of such supplement. I move to pass ordinance 2024-5 on its second reading. Second.
Motion of second, roll call vote?
Jenny Bowers Schultz.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Foyle Kent.
Yes.
Scott Murray.
Yes.
Abby Wilder.
Yes.
Motion to suspend the rules.
And introduce, because we're going for the final reading. We're on all the way. I move to suspend the rules and place ordinance 2024-5 on its third reading by short title only. Second.
Motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign.
Ordinance number 2024-5, an ordinance of the common council of the city of Decatur, Indiana, which enacts and adopts S8 supplement to the code of ordinances of the city of Decatur, Indiana, in which declares an emergency regarding the effective date of such supplement. I move to adopt ordinance 2024-5 on its final reading. Second.
Motion of second, roll call vote?
Jenny Bowers Schultz.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Foyle Kent.
Yes.
Scott Murray.
Yes.
Abby Wilder.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, so we either, the Border Works, we discussed the flock camera system. The Border Works is recommending to move forward with four cameras in pain for the first year out of ARPA funds. We would need approval from council to go ahead and spend those ARPA funds on the flock system. Does anybody have any information from Chief Gruber?
Just a, what is exactly looking for? It reads the license plates on the backs of the vehicles and it runs it through the NCIC system to check if it's a stolen vehicle or if it's a vehicle wanted in connection with a major crime. So, its purpose is to look for police activity that's either coming through our community or has happened and is exiting because we have stated license plate numbers of the vehicle. Basically, for major thoroughfares.
Right, and it's, you know, it's proven itself in Huntington, or in Bluffton, we know that it helped in a child abduction case where they traveled out of state and they were tracked on the flock system through other cities. And I believe there was a murder in Huntington last year or the year before where they had caught the license plate leaving a business from Bluffton, caught the camera and actually tracked the person down by the system, so. There's stories of people being tracked from Michigan all the way to Texas on the flock system, so. It doesn't check speeds, doesn't do any of that stuff, it only reads license plates.
And it's funded through, what is ARPA, I forget?
Rescue Plan Act, so it was the COVID money that we have to use up by 26.
So it's 53,000 now?
No.
No.
We're doing four for one year.
It's half that price, Matt, for four cameras, so the total cost, I believe, is, um, is what would come out of ARPA funds.
And then we're gonna ask him to budget it for it later.
That was my question, how long is that supposed to last? Or think that camera system is good for a year?
Or they own the cameras?
Okay.
And they replace them if they go bad, we just pay a subscription fee?
Yep.
We don't own the cameras. Okay. We're renting equipment.
Just for, I guess, tuck it in somewhere and remember this, it seems like everything in law enforcement is moving to, if they don't like the term lease, they like the hot term subscription. And this is in-car camera systems, tasers, this, everything is moving to the subscription service. They don't want to just sell you the item anymore. We're seeing a lot of that. And I got to answer for your question. He said typically anyone asking for a particular image on the Freedom of Information Act, their policy is that data is on there for 30 days and then it's gone. So if it's gone, it just becomes a whole issue at that point.
Okay. Okay. If it's not in our possession, then we don't have it.
Right.
Right.
Okay.
So I guess he's asking for approval to use these ARPA funds to get this system up and running?
I guess I'm good with it, I'd make a motion approved. And I'll, I'll need to look in to see what steps, the remainder of the funds are budgeted for 24. I don't know if any resolutions still need passed too. But I'll.
I think it needs, I think we may need to amend the ARPA plan to identify the expenditure, but I don't think that, I think we've approved the fact that that money has been allocated and such.
Yeah, it's not a reappropriation, it's just an amendment to.
Correct.
The ARPA plan.
Right.
Correct.
So is there a motion from Matt? Yep. Is there a second? Oh, second. Second for Scott, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Uh, Jeremy has, we have had a person ask for a park, a handicap parking spot near their property?
Contacted last week by Vanessa Jenkins, goes to 246 South 6. She has a mobility, a mobility, and she's requesting a handicap parking spot in front of 247 South 6.
Okay, wait, so you said 246?
She lives at 246.
So is she only parking on one side?
Yep.
Okay.
247, directly across the street.
Okay.
Problem is it's one, it's parking away on one side on South 6th Street, so it's first serve at this point. And a lot of times before she gets home, she's three quarters way down, in her street, parking in.
Is this, so this vehicle will be tagged with a handicap? License plate or stickers?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I have a plotter, she does have a plotter currently.
Okay.
And then we will put a sign up in the name of the owner, it's on the street.
Okay. Um, I talked to another mayor the other day about this, and he said that they always make sure to let the public know that that's still a public parking spot.
Right, it is.
No one, no address owns the spot, so if people leave, it's a public parking spot.
Is using, is using the driveway an issue for the mobility?
What's that?
Is using their driveway an issue for mobility?
They don't have a driveway right there at town. What she did, I have not been down to there for a while.
Looks like there's one. It looks like there's a picture of their house, so.
On the east side.
Is it 246, 246 would be their house? 246.
I'm required as your ADA coordinator to bring it up. You guys can.
I mean, that's up to you guys, if you want to take the time, you can sit on this and go check it out if you want, or you can.
I think my concern is just that, I mean, we've done some of these handicap parking spaces throughout the community before, um, you know, maybe there does need to be some investigation into it so that not every handicap person in the city is getting a handicap spot right outside their home, you know? Um, I'm not saying that it doesn't need to happen, but if they have a driveway, that would be closer seemingly than across the street.
I think we need to check out the house more and see.
So we can table this till the next meeting? Take a look at it?
Number 246.
The house is 246, they're asking for it to be in front of 247.
246 what?
246, north 6th Street.
South, south.
South?
North 6th.
It's north, yeah.
Did you use south?
I don't know, I looked. It should be over here by the Grace Fellowship Church.
Yeah.
On the west side of that. Right by the west end lot.
On 6th Street.
Yeah, yeah, the house will be on the east side. Okay.
So did she just call you up and ask you, is that how this, okay. Okay.
So we'll table this till the next, you guys can take a look at it and see.
Okay.
Okay, thanks Jeremy. Okay, um, I've been approached by, uh, Crossroads Group, Renee LeBlanc is, you know, working on recovery housing. Believe they have a house secured in Burn right now. Um, they've been doing some fundraisers and different things. We have, everybody received some opioid settlement money, we didn't, we're not getting very much. I think it's about $20,000 over 16 years, so it's not a lot of money. I was told that Burn and I believe Geneva have earmarked their dollars towards this Crossroads Group, and I've been asked what our plans are and if we would be willing to do that. I think right now we have, there's restricted and unrestricted, and we have about $3,000 in each one, I think, is that right, Kevin?
Yeah, 6,400 between the two.
And it was top heavy, you get more at the beginning, so we're not, I mean, it's 16 years and we're not getting a whole lot. And I think, if you're not over a certain amount, I think it goes to the county, so I'm not sure if there's a point when we won't even be getting any. Do you know?
Um, as far as I know, we get a settlement, or we get a distribution every year, but because of something with our amount being so small, the county got more, so that works.
We get a distribution every year, but because our amount falls below the threshold, ours gets lumped in and paid to the county. So, yeah, the city gets a portion, but it's such a small amount that it doesn't actually come to us.
So I guess that's, their ask is to, because opioid, it has restrictions on it, the opioid, opioid settlement money, and it's supposed to go towards recovery. This is, we know what they're working on and what they're trying to do in our community, so. It's up to you guys if you want to earmark that money towards them, or?
Is that on a, go on a year-to-year, like earmark what we have now and then? Yes, I'd love to see this group really make it in the community, but they've got a lot of stumbling blocks along the way too, trying to get rolling.
Right.
So. I think I would. Commit the money for now?
I think I'd be more comfortable with the donation for now.
Or they ask every year?
Yeah, I don't know if I want to earmark or money.
Yeah. What, did he say what he would use the money for?
Uh, um, no, it would just be to their program.
So all the cities within the county get amount, and then the county also gets?
Yes, and the county gets a lot larger.
Okay.
Anne and I spent months trying to figure this out, we even went to the Attorney General's office, we went through Ames Attorney, and it has something to do with us having a county-owned hospital, that the health money goes, most of it goes to the county. And so.
The way it was tracked, even though there were different events and health issues that fell under the trackable categories, the way that information was tracked, put it in a county category versus a city of Decatur category, and so that affected how our settlement proceeds were defined and distributed. It's kind of my understanding.
You know, because when I first saw the numbers, a year ago or so, I was looking at cities our size, Columbia City, Bluffton, they were getting somewhere in the 200,000 range over 16 years, we were getting 20,000.
Yeah, it didn't make, it did not make sense.
So we questioned and questioned, and honestly, at the end of the thing, we talked to the Attorney General's office and they basically said, this third party from the west coast did all these numbers, they are what they are. That was the answer, right?
Pretty much, okay. Does the county give some of their money to?
That I don't know. That I don't know.
Um, or does the hospital get the opioid money? The county, the county gets the money, so data was collected, you know, if someone had a drug-related medical event, or an overdose, or a drug-related death, that went through Adams County, and over the course of a, you know, a 20-year period of time, the way that that information was maintained, it made it appear that it was a county.
Problem.
A problem, a county issue, and wasn't necessarily delineating between the different communities within the county, is my, is kind of my understanding of that, and so it looked as if the county had been involved or dealing with all of these different events or issues versus the city, so they directed the funding there. I can answer the question about where the county's settlement money was directed. It was provided to the Recovery House, two crossroads, in a two-part. They recommended that it be allocated both toward inpatient, so their housing services, as well as maintaining some outpatient programming, and I think that they received one tier of funding and then have to come back and apply for the other when they're ready. I'm not sure where they stand in that process right now. I think they're getting the second, actually, or a recent meeting I read. What else would we use the money for?
I don't know, there's restrictions on it, so.
And his request falls within what we can use it for?
Yes, yeah, and he said he would gladly come speak before council if you want, if you want that.
I like what he's doing, I think it's a great asset, and it's only in its beginning stages. Um, I think it's an easy way for us to support them.
So do we want to?
I like Tyler's idea of maybe one year at a time, or?
Let them come back and ask each year?
Yeah, I don't know if I want to earmark it.
Okay.
I agree.
Doesn't work, I'm not saying, I don't.
Well, it'd be the opportunity, again, like if another organization were to come forward, you know, restrict us and give them.
So the total amount from the restricted and unrestricted, so totals roughly 6,400 dollars?
Is it just going into a fund now, there's no timing that has to be used by?
I don't believe there's timing now, because like you said, it's a 16-year distribution.
I'd maybe prefer him to ask for a amount than just empty both accounts and just hand it over to somebody or a letter or something. I don't know if I need a presentation, but.
Yeah. Maybe saying what he wants to use the funding for? If he has a specific something in mind.
I'd be more comfortable with that.
Okay, so you want an actual ask for an amount? And just an explanation of what it's going for? Okay.
And it doesn't have to be a presentation, it can be a letter.
Okay. I'll take that back. Okay, Kevin G.
Just have a conflict of interest for James Clark, he's a fireman and also does some other work for the city. So he has signed this, the mayor has signed it, just need to make it a public or a matter of record.
So move. Second. Motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign. Do you have anything else here?
Hello.
Do you?
Uh, no.
Okay. Our heads, Jeremy?
Okay, um, last week, we called my sister, grabbed a brush pile at the compost site, so there is mulch available.
Lots of mulch.
The public.
Huge pile.
This is a reminder when you load mulch on Tuesdays and Thursdays from 3:00 to 5:00, Saturday mornings, 8:00 to 10:00. There's no need to call to show up. And I'll get you picked up.
Jeremy, you want to explain, I heard Matt say huge pile, you want to explain to them that the big one's actually not ours?
The big, the big pile, there's two different grades out there. The huge pile is more of a, kind of a chunk, it's bigger shards, bigger pieces. Being that the brush piles have gotten so large through the county, this is a way for the solid waste district to save some money, solid waste district pays for Decatur, Burn, Geneva for the drag once a year. To offset the cost, the company takes about 75% of the material, they buy it back from the solid waste district. So we have the finer stuff, we don't have that big mountain out there, it's still there, but they've been hauling it.
Would they have been in there last weekend with semis taking it out? Okay, because I got a call that there are semis taking our mulch.
Not our mulch.
Right.
As a reminder, yard waste didn't start, or yard waste pickup didn't start last week. So, a lot of people off mowing, so have your stuff out by 7:00 AM. Same way with your trash, we have a lot of projects going on, we can't go back for it four times looking for yard waste. Started something a little new this year, the street sweeper is designated to be out the last two weeks of every month. Before it was hit mess, as we had time and as it needed to be done. Um, there's been some people calling and asking, hey, when are you coming around? I'd like to with my vehicle. Lot of vehicles that they're talking about, sent there, day after day. But the last two weeks of every month, so if someone asks you, hey, when's it coming around? Now, if we have a lot of employees off or we have weather or such, that schedule could go one way or another. All the parks are open, all but, Kikioga, obviously, Kikioga's taken a beat in the last couple of weeks with all the flooding. So, that's not at this time. The work at Kikioga Park on the Vincent Goat Topollet should resume as soon as the drags are hopefully in another week or so. We're getting a lot of calls from the league saying, you know, can't get hold of us personally, can't get hold of contractors, they're trying to call the contractor direct, I've had contact with them. So, so that's dry something, they'll be here to get finished, they started and they left, and they're writing up since. Also, last thing, as a reminder, we did open the dog park up in January, we had roughly 52-ish people that signed up. I guess as a reminder, if you want to join, take your proof of vaccinations and your $30 off to Riverside Center and say Renee, she'd be more than happy to make you a member for one year. So, it is renewable every day.
Okay.
Um, I had talked to Brooks Construction and our current round of community crossings, we're looking probably mid-June to get started, I'll give you some more information whenever we get a little closer. There will be a lot of paving, a lot of activities going on this summer, so.
Okay. All right. Kevin G.
We had a very successful golf cart in the TV registration day, we did 121 in total. That's about 50% of what we currently have registered. And even since then, we've done 37 more golf carts, so the nice weather's better than everyone else. Just a reminder to come get the new registration sticker. And the Zora Eclipse event, very well, thank Jeremy and Jeff and all the other departments to help where help was needed. On 13th Street, I'm not single time, that was the main thing to say.
Jeff?
Uh, yeah, and you know the water's starting to go down now, but if it would happen to come up, you see water, turn around, dump ground, we pulled five people out of the vehicle on 225 North last week. Two were one week old infants, a three-year-old, a mom and a driver. If you come up on high water, don't drive.
Yep, thank you for that. Aaron? Kurt?
Uh, yeah, it is the season to start mowing your yard.
Yes, sir.
Talking with Frank this morning, uh, effective Monday, we'll start looking at yards. Anybody who has issues, disabilities, fixed income, elderly, give us a call. We got a couple of excellent kids that like mowing the yards. If there's issues, call our office, we'll work with you.
Council?
I have, Dan, for years we were looking for activity at GE Lot, and now we have it. The concern is, I've had three different residents contact me about hours of operation and are they allowed to, and what is the enforcement of that? And I couldn't answer them, so, main concern is noise at 4:00 AM.
Well, I think at 4:00 AM, it's, um, they got approval through BZA, and I know that, um, there's been some issues with them going after, I think it's supposed to be 4 o'clock, right?
Uh, their, their official hours are 7:00 AM, 4:00 PM, Monday through Friday. Their official hours are from 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Monday through Friday. There's been a couple instances where they went past that 4:00 from the 5:00 to close to 5:30, those issues are being addressed.
Kurt, Andy or Brad has been down there a lot, I've spent about an hour and a half with a resident last Friday, so, it's an industrial site, and I know that it can be loud, I'm going to go down this week sometime and watch the operation and see if there's anything they can do to quiet anything. I don't know if, you know, there's better ways of loading that wouldn't be so loud, but I know there's a lot of upset residents down there. Anybody else? Anything from the public?
Mr. Becker's here. This is news from Bamworth County, I have to know what's going on over there, I'm over there three, four days a week, and this is something that you guys are never gonna have to contend with, and you need to thank the people in charge for keeping that from happening. Monday night, Bamworth City Council has an open forum meeting, they want to ban marijuana from city property, and they're gonna have it open here on Monday night, you can imagine. I'll let you know. I'm not going.
Anything else? Okay, I'll make a motion to pay the claims.
I'll second.
Motion second, pay the claims, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign.
And a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign.